Good evening and welcome to the City of Lincoln's regular meeting of the City Council. This meeting will be televised and available on cable channel 18 as well as available on Zoom.
It's fine, you guys don't have it, so I'll just do it. Not a problem. Problem, okay. All right, before I call the meeting to order, I've asked Jessie if I could announce our special guest today. Our invocation is going to be a little different tonight. Very honored to have the Lincoln Community Choir or part of them with us tonight. Some of you may know Mrs. Cindy Hagman, who was a choir teacher at Lincoln High School for many, many years, and she just retired. She has done amazing work in music and choir with our students. And my daughter was in choir and she's an amazing lady and so very happy for her to retire. But what she's done is she's created a legacy alum choir. So people in the community who want to sing, but also students who have graduated from Lincoln High School. And they are here to sing for us to open our meeting. So welcome, come on up and you can use the mic there. Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, that was amazing. And we will have them come back later in the fall when school is back in and everyone's back from vacations. And we'll have them come and maybe do a different song for us, but that was a real treat, thank you so much. Okay, call the meeting to order, welcome everybody to the City of Lincoln 2025 Regular Meeting City Council, Lincoln Redevelopment Successor Agency, Lincoln Public Financing Authority, July 8, 2025. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Reedy.
Here.
Councilmember Pearl.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brown is absent. Councilmember Eklund.
Here.
And Mayor Andriata.
Here, thank you very much for that. And Mr. George Alves is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that, sir. All right, item number seven, report from closed session, Ms. Molinkoff.
Thank you, Mayor, there is no reportable action this evening.
Item number eight, agenda modification. Is there anything on the agenda that council would like to modify for staff? Okay, all right, we have two presentations today. And the first one, great honor to do. We are presenting a proclamation honoring Len Velasquez for his 50 years of service to the American Legion, the James D. Fowler Post 264, and his lifelong dedication to the Lincoln community. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read this for you. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lincoln honoring Len Velasquez for his 50 years of service to the American Legion and his lifelong dedication to the Lincoln community. Whereas Len Velasquez has exemplified a life of service, commitment, and leadership to his country, community, and fellow veterans. And whereas Len Velasquez served honorably in the United States Army from 1960 to 1962 as an artillery surveyor achieving the rank of private and was stationed in Germany during the construction of the Berlin Wall, a pivotal moment in history. And whereas, since joining the American Legion, James D. Fowler Post 264 on July 1, 1975, Len Velasquez has devoted 50 years to the organization, serving in numerous leadership roles including commander, first vice commander, second vice commander, finance officer, executive officer, and Veterans Hall Board representative. And whereas Len Velasquez has remained actively involved in the American Legion's Boy State Program, assisting in the selection process of candidates to foster civic engagement and leadership among young men. And whereas Len Velasquez has made significant contributions to the Lincoln community since moving to the city in 1970, including a distinguished career in education as a seventh grade math teacher and school administrator at multiple Lincoln area schools. And whereas Len Velasquez's educational achievements include graduating from Red Bluff High School, where he served as senior class president and participated in sports, earning an associate's degree from Shasta College and obtaining a bachelor's degree in education administration and a master's degree in credentials to serve as a school superintendent from Humboldt State University. And whereas Len Velasquez's community involvement extends beyond education and veteran service to include active participation in the Lincoln Rotary Club, serving as president of the Placer County Administrators, coaching Little League and middle school softball, and contributing over 30 years to the Lincoln Rifle Club, including service on his executive board. And whereas Len Velasquez's unwavering dedication to his community, veterans, and youth has left an indelible mark on the City of Lincoln, inspiring others through his leadership, generosity, and commitment to service. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lincoln hereby recognizes and honors Len Velasquez for his 50 years of service to the American Legion, James D. Fowler Post 264, and for his lifelong contributions to the Lincoln community. Be it further resolved that the City Council extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Len Velasquez for his exemplary service, leadership, and enduring commitment to improving the lives of those around him. And I'm happy to take a motion to approve this so we can vote on it and congratulate you.
I motion to approve.
Deacon.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, congratulations, sir, thank you very much. Yes, I, I, I'm going to invite you to come to the podium and say a few words if you would like to. And I just want to say this is really special for me because I think you were serving in Lincoln schools when I was going to school here. And so it's an honor to read this and present it to you.
Moved to Lincoln in 1970, we were going to stay six years. Well, we, this is what, the 10th round, something like that. When we moved into Lincoln, I came in from the south for an interview. I saw this great big pall of looked like dust and gray. I thought you gotta be kidding me. That was it. The old Lincoln Mary Beerman School was my first school in Lincoln. I had two other schools at the time and over 600 kids. I moved on from there to the Glenn Edwards Middle School where I spent about 20 years. And I decided there's got to be more to this world than just this. So I resigned there and went back and found that I could teach math and then the kids listened. And I think we had some really great, great parents. Every once in a while I'll meet somebody on the street and they'll say, hey, Mr. V, what are you doing? You know, then you stop and think, all right, I recognize the voice, but there's no name. But after you talk for a while, you figure out who they are. You know, that's old age sneaking up on you. And it doesn't go the other way either. I appreciate the council in recognizing me. You've got a really great city, you've got good supporting groups of people down. And that's what you need to have a vibrant, very positive community and it's growing and we all know that. Again, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Want to say anything? So would you mind if we, we won't make you come in here, can we come out and take a picture with you? Would that be okay? Okay, great. Awesome, moments like that is, makes this job very rewarding. Okay, item 9B, Restoration Advisory Board Presentation, Sandy Dolby. I think they'll turn it on for you.
My name is Sandy Dolby and I'm looking, is this the mouse? No, it's, ah, okay. Jessie's going to help me do this because you are a hard act to follow, congratulations. Thank you. And, okay, I am the community co-chair of the Restoration Advisory Board. For obvious reasons, we just call it the RAB. So I am here with three of my colleagues, I'd like to introduce real quick. Jeffrey Callison, raise your hand, Tom Dinsler and Rick Carrero, raise your hand. There are three of, four of us, we serve along with other volunteers as part of the community division. And then the other part, kind of interdependent parts, are the officials. And they include our other co-chair, who is the project manager for the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Matt Marlap. He's joined by his Public Affairs Officer, Major Kara Green. Rob Figurnis is from the State Water Board. Two people not on there that serve as liaisons, important liaisons, are, include Paul Breckenridge from the Placer County Real Estate Division and are your own, Richard Pearl, who is a very valuable asset and liaison. And that's one of the reasons why we're here, so you can blame him if I don't do well.
That's easy.
Okay. All right, the next, this is the next part, well, okay, I'm an apple person. I, there you go. So, okay, our, we started out last, a year ago March, appointed by the Army Corps of Engineers. Of course, brand new, we were all over the place. Since then, we've narrowed it down to, our focus is the TCE, that's the main thing that the United States Army Corps of Engineers is tasked with getting rid of. So we're working as liaisons with that and also with the public. We have started a newsletter, we have started an email site so people can reach us. We're on Nextdoor letting them know what's going on. We pass on Major Green's public affairs news releases. And we contact the media and say, hey, you want to get involved in this? You want to tell people about our quarterly meetings? Our next one is coming up, can you get it in the newspaper? The reason you see red asterisks there is reminding me to thank you, the City of Lincoln. I am here not only to introduce ourselves, but also to say thank you and to issue an invitation. The thank you is for, first of all, you're posting our RAB newsletters and we, and we are delighted with that. And that's because of Richard, Aaron Frye, and Sean. Thank you very much. And next, we can tell you that we're going to, the quarterly public meetings, for the first time, we are, well, let me see if I can get this right. We are going to be not meeting in Sun City, Lincoln Hills. I do not know how or why, all last year, we met at Sun City, Lincoln Hills. They're terrific hosts, I'm not knocking that. But as we looked out at the audience, we said to ourselves, where's Lincoln? You know, where are the, where are the others? This site was active long before Sun City, Lincoln Hills was here. This site holds so many memories and so much history for the City of Lincoln, where are they at? And in a meeting once with, with Richard, he said very politely, come to us. And so I want to thank you, you've waived our fees so that we can meet at McBean Pavilion, 6 to 8 p.m., July 24. I know that's the last thing you want to do is be invited to another meeting. But should you have that open on your calendar that night, we'd love to see you. We're going to be talking about some very important issues. One is the feasibility study. The feasibility study means that they are coming up with ways to fix the TCE problem and they're weighing the pros and cons. And in that report will be, here's what we can do and here's what's good and bad about what we can do. And out of that, hopefully, will come a decision about what to do and then will come the actual doing of it. We're also going to be hearing about the better timetable for when the county is going to start their lead cleanup. And we're going to be reviewing the most recent test results of the monitoring wells. So you'll be getting the, the, hopefully, the most important information about what's where and is a plume moving? And so far, it's been stable, so we're going to hear what's, what's next. And then one more thing I wanted to tell you about is something we're doing called Remembering the Titans. I don't know if you picked up the newspaper last Friday, but you'll see the first of our series debuted. We decided that there's so much division over this, so much people, you know, so many people saying, why did it take so long? Very good question. People are saying, we don't trust you. And we said, how can we bring us together? And somebody had the great idea, it wasn't mine, of, let's put a human face on this. Let's talk about the people that were touched by this missile base, by the land, what are their stories? And we started last week, we've got the cooperation of Bill Poindexter of Gold Country Media. He, so the first, first of the series ran last week. We have two more installments. We are asking people who were around then, people who worked there, people who helped build it, people who went to see it, people who were touched by it, how did it interact with your life? And what we want to do is kind of not only inform you, but also involve you and maybe even inspire us to come together. I don't know if any of you remember a gentleman by the name of Eli Demus. Okay, we, I just finished interviewing him last week. And he was the city liaison in 1971 when Hollywood came to Lincoln and they were going to buy that land and transform it. Well, I'm not going to tell you anymore because I want you to read the story. But in talking with him, and he was talking about, and I said, okay, what would you do? And it was obvious but profound at the same time, and I'm going to paraphrase it. He said, get everybody together, both sides, all sides, and have them start working together. Own this goal of fixing it up. It's not impossible. Put aside the slings and arrows, put aside the mistrust, and come together and say, what can we do, how can we help? Let's get it done. So that's what we're working on and I just wanted to introduce us, say thank you for partnering with us. And if you can't make it to the meeting, stay in touch. Tell us how we're doing, tell Richard what we're doing wrong and what we're doing right. And let's seriously start this, let's start this solution together. There's an old TV show that I used to watch where the main thing of this, theme of every single episode was, how can I help? So with that, thank you very much for your time. And, and also thanks to the Parks Department, I wanted to not, I wanted to tell you what a great staff you have. I mean, when we started looking at going into McBean Pavilion and the Army Corps of Engineers wanted to do a walk-through, everybody was so great. And, you know, you should be really proud of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Sandy, really appreciate that very much. Go ahead.
Thank you, Sandy, and the rest of the team. It's been a, I don't want to say it's a slow start, but you are building up a real head of steam right now. The newsletter is super, the website, what you're doing, the outreach, I think is really important. I think it's a great idea to move it from Sun City out to the rest of the community. Because this is a, there's, there's two parts of this story here. One is the, one is the science and the other is the human element to it. And both sides have to be brought together to, to resolve this. I think we all know that it's will be a, it'll be a long time, nothing, you know, let's say the wheels of government and justice grind slowly. No, I don't think we ever realized it would grind this slowly. But I mean, but we're making solid progress and that's the important thing, so, yeah. And we look forward to that, to that July meeting. And hopefully, the rest of the community will come out. That's why we moved it to McBean. And we're looking forward to continue to put the pressure on those organizational levels that, that need to have the pressure done. The county is working with us very well right now, but hopefully, they'll have their side of the cleanup done by the end of this, this calendar year. It will be great, be, be super to have close out one check mark. So, very good, thank you again, Sandy, and the rest of the team.
Yeah, we're, we're very grateful for all of you because we know this is a lot of time and energy. So we're, we're very appreciative to the whole team, thank you very much. Does anyone have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say really quickly that I appreciate your, I appreciate your positive attitude and taking a fresh approach to making it personable and where it all came from because I really do think that that will make a difference. And coming at it from, in that perspective, I think is, it's just kind of like a refresh. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all in your presentation.
I love the, the, the comment, put down the slings and arrows. I think that should be the motto moving forward, so, good job. All right, thank you, all right, we are moving on to item 10, which is our public comment. So this is the time in the meeting where we have public comment on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. All speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. All comments or questions should be addressed to the mayor. And in most cases, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item, not appearing on the posted agenda, but may engage in brief discussion, provide direction to city staff, or schedule items for further meetings. And I have two cards, the first one is Jane Leonard.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jane Leonard, I have just moved into Lincoln Hills, Sun City, Lincoln Hills about three and a half months ago. So I'm a newbie, very impressed with the City of Lincoln and things going on here. So thank you all for your service and your leadership. I met a congress member, I recall, council member, sorry, maybe, who knows? Pearl at memorial sort of service at Lincoln Hills in Sun City. And I introduced myself and I mentioned two things. One is the very ever-present light on the corner of Sierra College and 12 Bridges, which I am not going to talk about. But the other thing was that I noticed that on the roadway between Sierra College and Stone Ridge, which is the entrance to the Sun City on that side, that both sides of the roadway were missing street markings. And there was this very specific part about a half a mile before down where 12 Bridges turns and Stone Ridge is there. There were no markings at all, it was very dangerous. So I mentioned this to him. And they promptly, within a month, maybe even less than that, have made the correction. The street markings are beautiful, they're fantastic. They also added the reflectors down the middle. And I just wanted to thank you and thank the Public Works team and the Streets team, whoever you are. I'm still learning who's who. Yeah, thank you very, very much because, and it's beautiful, it just looks fantastic. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you very much. Thank you for passing that along.
Well, thank you, because I remember our conversation, you were a traffic specialist.
Well, I'm from the city of Culver City and I was a Parks Commissioner and was involved in transportation and a lot of things down there, so.
We may be calling on you and thank you for raising me up from a councilperson to a congressman. This is good. I just ran into Kevin this morning, I'm not sure he's happy about that.
Well, let me just say, thank you, one, for bringing an issue to our attention and, two, coming back and letting us know when we've done it right. We don't always get that, so thank you very much for both of those, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, I know how good that can feel, so.
It's nice to know when projects get accomplished and when they're done correctly, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next card is Lolly Gunter.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lolly Gunter, I live over off Stansbury Lane. I back up to the field that backs up to Scott Lehman Elementary School. I have been trying for three years to get some information. I need to get a contact name and number or an email of who is responsible for the contract for the sheep grazing, which is another thing, it's not goat grazing or sheep. The problem is that our field doesn't get grazed. What happens is they do a little edge around the pond and then what they do is they run those sheep to trample our weeds. They're not eating them, they're packing them down. And I have talked to the shepherds, I guess that's what they are, and talked to them about that. I'm one of those families that got my insurance not canceled, but we will no longer be renewing you since you work, you live in a wildfire area. So that was really disgusting because it's like, we're not a wildfire area, we just have a field behind us. But the point is, we have years of grass that's been trampled. I actually took a video of it this year because I thought, do people not believe me when I'm calling and reporting this? So I started in May of this year trying to find out, who can I talk to? Who's responsible for that contract? Who's paying these people for not doing what they should be doing? Who's in charge of the scope of work where they should be signing off that it was done? Because it's not done, three summers in a row and we have the same problem again. We're also having problems, just not, not to change a subject, but we're also having trouble with mini bikes. Now, I don't know how many of you grew up riding mini bikes, I probably caused a fire to myself on an old mini bike. I probably caused a fire to myself on an old mini bike. But the, the point is, we have kids that play there in that part of the field. We have mini bikes there. I did call the Lincoln PD and talk to them about it. They're, they're great. They told me, when I see the kids out there, give them a call, a non-emergency number, but they, they can never get there before the kids are gone. So another thing is there's no signs posted on our side of the pond. If you go in on the Brentford Bridges, you can see the sign that says no motorized vehicles allowed. But if you come in on the courts there, there along Stansbury, there is no signage about motor vehicles. My husband and I have tried to talk to the, the young men that were out there riding the mini bikes and let them know, but they're like, we never see a sign. It's because they're coming in through the neighborhood and into the courts. So we have a fire hazard there today. I had a postcard put on my garage door taped to it that was regarding the, the penal code. I think it's 462, don't quote me on that, talking about the responsibility to make sure that all the fire, possibility of fire fuel is gone. I don't have control of that field. So, long story shorter, I would like to know who's responsible for that. I'd like a name and or phone number, someone that I can call, someone that I can send a registered letter to. But I think we need to deal with that. The, down at the other end, the last pond, I've talked to people down there today. It's beautifully shorn. There is, you know, it looks great. They had the sheep out there for nine days. We had the sheep for one and a half day behind our house. And we also had sheep that were dying in that field. And I watched the shepherds pull the dead carcasses over to those oak trees behind the school and cover them with weeds. And kids play down there. It's just, it's disgusting. So we need a little of attention there in that field. John knows which field it is. Need, need a little help here, folks.
Okay, thank you very much for, for that. So, yeah, would that be you for the, okay?
Yeah, if you could give your information to the clerk, we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
I have it right here. I'll make sure.
And your name is?
Matthew Madell, Public Works Director.
We'll make sure we get that handled, Lolly.
All right, well, first, like I said, this is the third year where I have people that are going to call me that I haven't spoken with yet. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. Is there anybody else in the chamber that would like to make a public comment? That's not, Mr. Fuller, go ahead. Huh? Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Mike Fuller. I'm also the host of Plaster's Mic Drops, a civic accountability podcast focused on exposing irregularities in local governance and taxpayer spending. Tonight, I want to formally place the following on record for this council and for your legal team. Let's start with the basics. The Gathering In is not protected under AB 172. That bill and the CCE expansion grant was created to fund the expansion of licensed senior and adult residential care facilities, specifically RCFEs and ARFs. The building at 1663rd Street was formerly licensed as a memory care RCFE. But at this time, TGI, TGI applied for funding dated on July 28, 2022, per the grant application. Gliding Ridge actually held a license, but it expired February 28, 2024. And as of June 30, 2025, CDSS and Community Care Licensing confirms that there are no licenses approved, transferred, or applied. There was nothing. Till this day, they haven't even acquired one for a couple of years. So if they put in their application in 2022, eight days later, after they were tabled for their letter of support, how come they still haven't acquired a license as required by the CCE grant? So, at best, I don't really believe that they're attending or intending to apply for one at all. Their own grant application openly states medical respite facilities are not licensed. That single sentence disqualifies them from the grant category they applied under. Now let's talk about what they're operating. TGI calls it a low-barrier medical respite. That's a contradiction in terms because low barrier means sobriety or no sobriety required, no obligation to participate in treatment, unrestricted come-and-go access, often minimal, and no formal intake or screening process. Medical respite, on the other hand, refers to short-term post-hospital clinical recovery, which in California requires oversight and depending on services, an RCFE or health facility license. They are blending these terms to bypass regulation while delivering care that triggers licensing requirements. Let's go further. Their federal NPI registry, which tracks licensed medical providers, lists TGI only as case management. No RCFE license, no medical credentials, and no listing for medical respite care. Yet, in their grant application, they admit they will transport guests to medical appointments using TGI's own vehicle if Medi-Cal Transportation isn't available. That is non-emergency medical transportation, and TGI is not licensed to perform N E M T services in the state of California. And that's a liability to the city and public safety. They've mentioned this publicly in Roseville that they do this as well, so it's safe to assume Auburn facilities are included. What's worse is the memory care facility was never rezoned. That parcel is only legally allowed to operate as a licensed RCFE by calling it something else and refusing to apply for the required license. TGI effectively bypassed public hearings, sequel review, and any community input that would have happened, or that would have happened had this been done transparently. And let's be honest, TGI and its supporters have repeatedly weaponized compassion while residents raise legitimate concerns and questions about licensing, zoning, public safety. So we're called anti-homeless, or anti-homeless, but I can say this plainly, compassion without compliance is not, it's not care, it's chaos. So no vulnerable person should be housed in a facility that skirts every law under the banner of good intentions. If that is allowed to stand, we're setting a dangerous precedent where any organization can misuse state grant funds, skip licensing, bypass zoning, and call it medical care with no regulation, no transparency, and no accountability. That's not governance, that's negligence. Plaster's Mic Drops is continuing to track every document, every license, and every contradiction. And I'm happy to share every piece with this council and your legal team. Thank you for standing up for this sitting and doing what's right.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that very much. Is there anybody else in the chamber who would like to make a public comment on item not on the agenda? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Stella, go ahead and unmute.
Yes, hello. Hi, this is Stella Greenhouse. I live on 67 East Street in Lincoln. And I am coming as, by Zoom, as I'm not able to come into the, the city hall right now. But I did leave some paperwork that my neighbor had dropped off. I think she left it on the table. It's for our city manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, and for our council members. But Madam Mayor, I, I come to address you specifically about the packet that I've left. Let me first say that my family got a chance to go to the Fourth of July celebration and got to see a lot of things that the city has been putting on for a long time. So I just want to give appreciation for those donors, those volunteers and committee members that put on that, that event. My family thoroughly enjoyed that. But what I had talked before is I had talked about a proverb, Madam Mayor, about Proverb 11:9. And I do want to share one about Proverb 12:1. But the paperwork that I've dropped off there, and hopefully the, the city clerk or the city attorney is able to get it off the, the table there, is some paperwork that is about our exclusion notice in regards to our city and a municipal code that we have. And the reason I'm bringing this to you is you might remember when I attended the work session for the Western Placer Unified School District as well as the City Council on April 29. And in that packet, I made a copy of what those minutes were. But on the exclusion notice that I had received, I expressed to the city attorney, she came over to address me and tell me I wasn't supposed to be there. I expressed to her that I was outside of that exclusion notice. And the last time I was at the meeting, Madam Mayor, you asked me about the abuse or the information. And this is an example that I have experienced. So my exclusion notice, as I put a copy of it there for all the council members and our city staff, it says on my paper, April 24th, and that the noon after April 24th. I also did go to the police station and I asked the police officers if I was outside of that exclusion period, and they did tell me that I was. So when I showed up on April 29th, and you will see in the video that is available online from that recording of my conversation with you, Madam Mayor, but I was expressing to you that I was in my legal right and that the information that she had was false. So on the first page of the packet that I left there, it is the copy of these, of the municipal code from our libraries.municipalcode.com, I think is the website, that goes through that municipal code. And in that municipal code, why I'm concerned about this is that it says on there that the city will keep accurate database of all members that have been excluded. And here's an, an example that happened to me that wasn't accurate. And on top of that, it also says that the discretion of the city attorney is how that gets decided if you violate that, if it's an infraction or if it is a misdemeanor. And so in a place of democracy, giving the power of the city attorney to then decide that this exclusion is now a misdemeanor is why I'm in this situation. Thank you for the time, and I hope that you guys get those packets to take a look at the documentation I left you.
Thank you, Stella. Can you tell me where you left that packet? Because we don't have it. It's on the table right here? Okay, we've got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Anybody else online? Jesse?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll close public comment. And we'll move on to item 11, consent. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to pull or have questions? No? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Daggett, were you raising your hand for something or did you, did you have a question about one of the items? Okay, we'll hold for a second. Go ahead. Which one? 11J, okay. All right, can, what, what's your question? So come on up, you can ask real quick.
So the question, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with, with the grant and what it's for. I guess my, my question is, not to, I don't want to stir a debate, but we don't have any cannabis dispensaries in the city. I can only guess as to what the reason is for that, but it just seems a bit, it seems, it seems we don't allow them in the city, but we're taking money from them as in the form of a grant. It seems a bit hypocritical to take the money that we don't allow in the city or really in the county with the exception of Colfax. So just, it's, and not to say we shouldn't take the grant. I think we should. I think we should obviously do the opposite and also allow it in the city. But again, I don't want to start a debate, but that was, it's, it's not so much a, not a well-worded question, but it's a, yeah, question of.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. Would you like to speak to that, Chief? Thank you. I know you can explain it.
Absolutely. So these grants were set up when California legalized the sale of cannabis. You all right? All right. When they legalized the sale of cannabis in the state of California, there was grant funding for enforcement of DUI due to cannabis. So though we do not have any cannabis dispensaries in the city of Lincoln, there are cannabis dispensaries and people can legally consume cannabis in the city of Lincoln, therefore bringing potentially intoxicated drivers that are under the influence of cannabis into the city of Lincoln. This grant is to combat that. So yes, even though we do not allow commercial sales here, we are still affected by commercial sales in the state of California. And that's what the grant is for, to enforce that.
Great, thank you for that. Thank you for the question. That, that's a good, that's a good question because you had a great explanation. People might not understand that. So thank you. All right, so we had a, we had a, a first and a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yes.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes, thank you. Okay, item 12. Public hearing, 12A, adopt a resolution approving changes to the source water connection fees and consider waiving the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance amending sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code Title 13, public services regarding water connection charges, and further finding the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under California Environmental Quality Act. Matt, is this yours? Oh.
I'm going to have Chris Nelson, Public Works Environmental Services Manager, present this item.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're here again this year, as we've been the past, to talk about our connection fees and to do our annual adjustment. But in addition to that, we are asking for, are presenting an amendment to the ordinance that would call for a streamlining of the process and not allowing us for the city manager to go ahead and adjust those fees annually according to the, the rules and regulations within the ordinance. So just kind of a little background information. The Lincoln Municipal Code establishes source water capacity fees and charges for regulated water based off of, that was, sorry, as defined in the Nexus Study. And the water connection charges and for unregulated areas are currently adopted by the Placer County Water Agency Zone 6 capacity charges. Just a little background on regulated versus unregulated water. Regulated water, when we get it from PCWA, is the majority of the supply that we do get from them. That serves most of the customers. It goes through, from their treatment plant to our water storage facilities and then feeds down through gravity into our customers. There is an area up at Catawba Dara that is above those storage facilities that requires the use of unregulated water. And in just kind of basic terms, it's like a connection to their retail system. The demand is a demand on their retail system, and it kind of helps supply that water up to that upper zone and upper area. We can't regulate or control how much water is flowing into that area. It's based off of what the capacity is within their distribution system. Whereas we can control it with our water tanks for the regulated supply. So just a little background there so you can understand the differences between the two. So going through the calculations for the regulated supply, we have actually found that there's a decrease this year after looking through the San Francisco Construction Cost Index for this year. It's about a 1.4% decrease compared to 2024. However, the regulated, the unregulated supply, when you take a look at PCWA's rates established for Zone 6, there is a slight increase. So our findings and analysis shows us that for the regular capacity, we're recommending that we're not going to be making any changes since it's such a nominal difference. But we are asking for a 13.15% increase for the unregulated. The impact of that unregulated is minimal since most of that area is already built out. There's very little construction that will happen up in that upper zone. So just keep that in mind when, you know, when you kind of think about that. Most of the construction, everything is going to happen in the regulated zones. As far as the changes that we're asking for the ordinance itself, we are asking to, are recommending an amendment to authorize the city manager to annually adjust the source water connection fee for regulated and unregulated capacity based on the annual percentage change for engineering, news, and review for regulated capacity and for unregulated based off of the PCWA Zone 6 listed charges. So following the same rules, but asking to streamline it so it can be just an automatic adjustment.
So you don't have to come back and do this every time?
I mean, I'm sorry. I know everyone loves seeing me, but yes.
We love seeing you. Yes, we do.
Well, we would come back and do it in the sense that like when we're doing a real update to, you know, you know, major capital change where they're making serious changes to the, the method by which they're calculating it or, or something more significant than, of course. This, I think, Chris, was the intention of just like the routine stuff is routine.
Yeah, and that way we could automatically make this adjustment as of July 1st instead of having to push it out to, you know, September timeframe. So that is my presentation. If there are any questions.
Any questions from the council before I open the public?
Just one, quick one. So not often does something go down, but we didn't lower it. Why? Even though it's a very minimal amount?
Exactly. Just simply because it is such a small, small amount. No other reason.
Okay, so it could be lowered.
It could be lowered, yes.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there any testimony on this item? Anybody online? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any other questions or comments? Do you want to talk about that or are you okay?
Well, I just feedback on, you know, I mean, it's 1.4%, so I know it's not a big number, but if it allows us to lower rates, why would we not?
So, that's really an interesting kind of policy question. So on the one hand. So on the one hand, when it's minor enough in nature, first of all, I have to go back and check. I don't know if you remember off topic or hey, Chris, but we did, they did reduce. It came down a little bit. It was either the year, last year or the year before when they did a reanalysis of how much water an average home actually uses. And so things have changed a lot over, for example, the home I live in is like over 30 years old and so isn't super duper efficient in terms of water usage. The ones that are getting built today are very different. They use a lot less water and so they've calculated that and made an adjustment. In this particular instance, I don't think there's any reason you couldn't reduce it. It's not going to put us in a position where we can't purchase the appropriate capacity that we need to for those units. But what I would say is that while we're not recommending an increase, it is realistic to state that generalized costs are increasing for construction, which these funds do go to fund. And so the short probably occurs on a very small level down the road a little bit. So I, I'm sort of ambiguous about either way.
And it was an average across the entire year or so. And there were times where, there were months where it was actually increased and of course months where it was decreased as well.
Can you, can you explain that for me? I thought it was.
Oh, the CPI. Sorry, not the, yeah, the CCI, yes. So it's a 12-month period. And so within that 12-month period, there were floor cultures, ups and downs, peaks and valleys. So it's not like it was consistently throughout the year, 1% lower.
Just when you did the 12 months, you came to 1.4%.
Yes.
One question. Christine, is there any legal issues that we have because we know that it's a little bit lower than that? Bring it down. I don't want to talk, we're not talking about any significant amount of money, but just from a policy standpoint. Or from a legal standpoint.
No, there's no concern from a legal standpoint. You can always lower, you just can't increase above what your adopted rates are.
Okay, all right.
Well, then I'm curious, can we lower the rates and how much? I mean, how does that process work?
You can. I would just say that, so everybody understands, these are not rates, like what you're paying for the water. They're, they're the buy-in fee that you pay, yeah, to get into the system. Right. New, so like, yeah, if you're building, if you're a developer or you're a single individual building a home, this is the price you pay to get into the water system. It's the buying cost essentially. So it's very different from like an maybe 1,600 fee, which is an impact fee. This is a connection charge, which is designed to be saved and held for those expensive things that you end up having to build down the road. But if, but you know, look, like I said, I don't think there's, there's no significant financial, you know, concern, I think, that we have since you look at this every year. If you decided, hey, we'd prefer to just sort of stay at whatever the slightly reduced amount is, you can do that. It's fine. It's not, they move the needle a whole lot one way or the other.
I have some comments to add. The PFE Nexus study and the source water connection fee was established in 2022. Since that time, we're currently updating the water master plan. Part of that water master plan that we're including is the addition of a booster pump station to provide redundant fire supply to those upper, upper area homes. So if nothing else, when you're thinking about the 1.4%, you could think of that as going towards the booster pump station. So there is a need for the source water. We're also adding a well, a groundwater well to provide more system resiliency probably every five years going forward. So there's significant additions to the source water capacity that we have planned that are in the draft water master plan that I believe will be presented to you in August.
Can you clarify? My understanding was this is straight pass through the PCWA and it has to do with our internal.
There's two, two fees that we're discussing. The pass-through's the unregulated zone.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct. The pass-through is the unregulated zone. So you're talking about the regulated. I'm sorry. So that, so ignore the booster pump station.
Rewind.
Focus on the wells. So the wells were not originally anticipated that level of groundwater redundant supply. So yeah, forget about the booster pump station, although we are, we are planning to add one. But we will be, so what I'm saying is that 1.4% is easily offset by the additional investment in capital that we are, that we will be making.
So again, I'm just not, so I, the, I was going to track a number, but this number is how, is some percentage staying with us? Because my understanding was it was all going to PCWA, which case it wouldn't do anything for internal.
You could do one of two things with it, right? Like, so what we have traditionally al- almost always done is used water connection fees as sort of tender to go purchase capacity in many different forms. Whether it be contributing a bunch of money towards a project or just buying them on a yearly basis. But the connection fee is Lincoln's connection fee that's informed by PCWA's study. And so, and correctly, because this has been a little while since we dealt with this, but when we were looking at the last investment we made in a PCWA project, one of the things Christine and I looked at was whether or not we could divert some of those water connection fees to other projects here internally, which we could do. But we, but the risk of that is, to not get super technical for everybody here, is that if you do that, you may hamstring your ability to purchase that capacity that you may really need. So in other words, if you want to build some internal redundancy within your water connection system, you can do that. But that's that much less money that you have to go purchase the capacity you may need to serve development. You know, so dollars can go one way or the other. It's got to be strategic about how you do it.
Okay, and so you might collect them at a rate in the next 12 months, but you're going to spend them at a different. Because like, when you go to buy those from PCWA, it's going to be at the rate at the time you did it or at the rate at the time you collected?
No, it's right at the time you do it. At the time you, you request it.
Okay.
So not, so not when you collect it.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and one of the issues we have with the PCWA supply is we have two transmission lines. With the Oford plant, we'll get a third. But we want to have our own internal resiliency. Just in the past few months, I know PCWA has alerted us to, like the Foothill Water Treatment Plant, our sole PCWA water supply was down for a period of time. So we had our wells fired up and we were relying on water storage. So our max day demand right now is about 18 million gallons per day in the summer and our groundwater supply is about 8 million gallons per day with all five wells online. So we want to have a higher level of water supply resiliency, source water resiliency. And I can't remember the exact number that we invested in the Ofor Water Treatment Plant. I think it was 35 to 40 million for about 3.3 million gallons a day. One will, one well will provide us 1.5 to 2 million gallons per day for approximately 7 to 8 million dollars. So we get a whole lot more instantaneous water supply from the wells. So we definitely want to invest in more wells. And, and part of that is for our fire protection as well as just system resiliency.
I, I'm fine leaving it the way that it is, especially because my understanding was it was a complete pass-through. And it's not being a pass-through. I think it's fine to keep it where it is.
Yeah, I feel the same way. And that really helps. Thank you for the clarifications.
Great. Thanks for the question. Okay, there's no other comments or questions, then I'll take a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that. And Matt for the clarification. All right, general business, item 13A, adopt a resolution approving the salary schedule for the newly established Senior Wastewater Collection System Technical Classification. And welcome, Sam.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. The item before you is request to approve the proposed salary schedule for the newly established Senior Wastewater's Collection Systems Technician Classification. Previously, this classification series consisted of two levels and lacked a senior that could act in a lead capacity. On May 12th of this year, Aaron Hookins, the prior public services supervisor overseeing the wastewater division, was promoted to a maintenance, I'm sorry, a maintenance services manager position, assuming responsibility for waste water and for the fleet's divisions. This created a leadership gap in the wastewater division. And as a result, there was no direct lead or supervisor to oversee day-to-day activities like task management and employee mentorship. The new Senior Wastewater Collection Systems Technician class was approved by the city manager on April 10th. Upon approval of the proposed salary schedule, an existing wastewater collection systems tech position will be reclassified to the senior level. This will result in minimal budgetary impact and will establish an appropriate operational hierarchy in the wastewater division. For these reasons, we respectfully request approval of the proposed salary schedule for the new classification.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, any public comment on this? Anybody online? All right, bring it back. Take a motion. Pretty easy.
I'm moved. Second.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yes.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the City of Lincoln 4217 Energy Services Agreement Addendum Number One, Work Order Three, Electrical Vehicle Charging and Infrastructure in the Public Works Corporation Yard. Matt?
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and public. Tonight, I'm presenting the EV charging station at the corporation yard. I'll keep the presentation brief, but I'll be available for lots of questions. Tonight, we're going to give just a real brief background, talk about the, the location of the project, the commercial charging stations we plan to install, and then our recommendations. And you can see in the photo there, that's one of our two electric vehicles. That's a Ryzon flatbed. I think it's currently in the shop. It's been in and out of the shop, but when it works, it's great.
Hopefully it's under warranty?
I believe so. And Chief Alves can test, testify that they're just as happy with their Silverado EV. I think that one's probably still in the shop. So a little bit of background, why we're here tonight. The California Air Resources Board has adopted regulations requiring that local government, that would be state and local government, transition to zero emission vehicles. And that started in 2024 with a 50% requirement. So for vehicles over 8,500 pounds that are internal combustion engines, if you were to purchase one, you need to purchase a zero emission counterpart. In 2027, that increases to, to 100%. So in, in the budget that was adopted in June, we did approve, or your council approved, 11 Ford Lightnings, which will be complemented by ICE vehicles. And those are mostly all replacement vehicles for light duty ICE vehicles to make that 50% mandate. We also included in the 2027 year, the purchase of potentially our first electric garbage truck. We're going to be demoing one soon. Those have about a 376 kilowatt hour battery. We were told they will last the whole day. So we're looking at expanding our fleet by at least 12 electric vehicles over the next two-year budget. So how are we going to charge these electric vehicles? We worked with SiteLogic for probably about a year to come up with the plan that fit the budget that we included in our utility rate studies. We did include funding, so we've been thinking about this for a while now in our water, wastewater and solid waste rates. So we had, I think in the neighborhood of $900,000, which I thought would be sufficient. It's not sufficient. We needed a little bit more money. And likely in a future rate study, if this zero emission carb regulation is not deferred, which it very well could be, we'll likely need to invest a whole lot more in electric vehicle charging and/or another zero emission technology such as fuel cells or something else. And I know we've kind of kicked that idea around of some hydrogen production maybe at Watma. But those are just very preliminary discussions. I know most of our Public Works counterparts statewide took two paths. One path was like PCWA, PCW and Roseville both front-loaded and bought as many diesel vehicles as possible planning ahead for the next five years. So a lot of other agencies really doubled down on ICE and we're trying to postpone this decision as long as possible. Some are complying and the ones that are complying, that I've talked to personally, are pretty much buying Ford Lightnings or Silverado EVs to complement their ICE vehicles. For the full compliance year 2027, like at Cal Cities, all the public works directors and everybody in the room, including Cal Cities, is lobbying hard against this. It's the, the heavy duty vehicles really aren't ready for showtime. So getting back to the project location, here we have four dual port chargers. So those are 7.2 kilowatt hours. So it's kind of like an overnight charger and they have two paddles. So we could charge up to eight vehicles. And those are, I don't know if this works, but those are in the green, kind of south of the building. And there's nine parking stalls there and that actually is behind our locked gate. So those would just be for our, the city's use. Those aren't public charging. And then the blue chargers, those are 62.5 kilowatt hour chargers. So a Ford Lightning extended range battery is about 131 kilowatt hours. So you could effectively charge one of those with the, with one of the four 62.5 kilowatt hour chargers.
Matt, is a Ford Lightning, is that a truck?
Yeah, it's like basically a F-150, an electric version of a F-150.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, and so we do have planned to purchase a bunch of those and one garbage truck in this next two-year budget. So effectively, we can charge the 12 vehicles here. We actually have one charger installed to charge the Ryzon. And I think Lieutenant Williamson is charging his Silverado at target. But hopefully soon we'll have some equipment where he can do a two-hour charge. Again, just a reminder of where the solar project is. The solar project is out at the corp yard. And you can see the Western Solar Array is over the top of the dual port chargers. So we're effectively using the conduit run to service these that we're installing with the solar project. So this is a photo and just some numbers on the dual port chargers for the Ford Lightnings. And this is the faster charger, the 62.5. And Councilmember Reedy's asked a whole lot of questions over the last 24 hours about EV charging. So we had a lot of constraints with this project. One, timeline. We did engage PG&E EV Fleets Program and that was going to be, that was going to extend our runway quite a bit as far as having like a separate dedicated service. So we are leveraging our existing 1,000 amp service that we have out at the corp yard and connecting to that. And we also were working with the, within the budget that I set of a million dollars. We've gone through many iterations and this is basically for the money that we had available from the rate study and, and some nominal amounts from the other funds. That's kind of the best fit scenario for kind of like the next three-year outlook. So you can see, as with Public Works, we spread the love to many accounts. Obviously, the enterprise funds and the PFE funds that are for increased capacity due to development. You can see the breakdown of the funding. And we asked that you adopt the resolution, creating the CIP, approving the budget augmentation. We do have approximately an 18% contingency. I don't foresee needing that much, but I'd rather be safe than end up short and have a delay and have to come back to council. And I can work with Sean and make sure that we're good fiduciaries of the, of the. the contingency. Also authorize Sean to enter the agreement, and I'm available for any questions. And we have Eric James here from Site Logic as well, who's been helping me answer questions for the past day.
Thank you, Matt. My first question is, did you, did I hear you right, that you said one of our neighboring cities, instead of complying with the state mandate of buying EV vehicles, they doubled down and bought more diesel and?
Ahead of, whoa, I'm sorry. Yeah, ahead of the 50% requirement, so they're doing this in 2022 and 2023.
Okay. Help me understand that, what do you mean ahead of the requirement, like they're not buying EVs where they're supposed to be, I mean?
If you don't purchase any vehicles, there's no 50% match requirement, there's no 100%. So what they did was they looked at their next five-year outlook and advanced all those purchases so they could purchase diesel. They loaded up early before the program started.
Gotcha, okay. And then the second thing is, just mainly for the, the public's understanding that this is another thing that we call an unfunded mandate, right? Now the state requires municipalities, even though the federal government has reversed the personal-use vehicles, the, the, the ban on gas-powered vehicles by 2035 or whatever, that's no longer a thing, but it's still in effect in California for municipalities.
Yeah, the advanced clean trucking, which was very similar, was eliminated with the federal updates as well as the CAFE standards and the 2035 zero-emission vehicle goal. So the only thing that's left is the state and local government, state mandate.
Right, so now we're being forced to buy a lot of EV vehicles, which are fine, like whatever, but, but now we have to pay for the charging stations, correct? And so, and again, it's unfunded from the state, right? They're not helping, there's no grant money for that, we have to come up with that on our own, correct?
Yes, we are funding this primarily with enterprise funds.
Okay, that's annoying, I hate that. All right, thank you, I appreciate the?
Mayor, just to clarify one thing, it's a little bit confusing for people. So the Supreme Court's going to take up this, this, this issue of, of this, that particular order, assuming that stands. The question I keep getting from the public is, well, if the mandate doesn't exist for anybody else, why should it exist for cities? Well, the state has taken this perspective that city, and it's true, that cities and counties are subdivisions of the state, and so therefore if the state decides it's going to create its own policy, fine, go right ahead. The problem with that, though, is, you know, the taxpayers are paying for it, so they may not have, you know, a mandate individually, but they're funding a mandate that we have to comply with.
Right, no, that makes perfect sense, yeah. So I'll reiterate, it's annoying, I don't like it. It makes me mad, actually.
We don't like it?
No, not at all, because we're going to spend all this money, and then, you know, what happens if it gets reversed? Which, okay, EV vehicles are fine, that they work well, and, but for us having to like cobble all these funds together to pay for this, it's ridiculous. But, but I appreciate all the hard work you're putting into it, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to keep us out of trouble with the state. Let me ask you just a hypothetical question, what if we just said no, and we just went on as business as usual, what happens?
Christine would likely get busy, and it's a potential $10,000 per day fine.
It's a per day fine, right? Yeah.
Matt, what's the difference between a electric refuse truck and a, and a diesel refuse truck?
The electric trucks are going to require that Caltrans somehow have the state revise the 80,000-pound limit because they're too heavy to drive on state highways. They will destroy our roads because they're so heavy, so we definitely need battery technology that has higher energy density capacity, and there are solid-state companies that are developing that now. But they're heavier, they're electric, and they cost a lot more, and we haven't been able to demo one that works yet, but we're hopefully going to demo one soon. Mack Truck is, I talked to Mike Osborne, our fleet supervisor today, and that's the only one that he's aware of right now is, is Mack.
Okay, and I assume that we're not the only city that's having a problem with this?
No, actually, at the Cal Cities Public Works Officers Conference, one city in Southern California had presented to the group that they had transitioned their utility truck fleet to vans, Ford Transits. They actually, because there isn't a medium-duty, like a F-250, F-350 equivalent, so they transitioned all the vans. And they're actually a city similar to Roseville where they're an electric utility. So people asked, well, what about your specialty vehicles or other heavy-duty vehicles? And they said that they were going, they were looking into ordering a garbage truck, but they hadn't started that yet.
I assume that's Anaheim you're talking about?
Uh, I don't remember the name of the city, it wasn't Anaheim, but everyone asked them the same questions, and they're pretty much in the same predicament because it's the, the utility truck availability is, it's still really in the early stages, and there's not a lot of options. So, yeah, I, I think it's likely there will be a lot of non-compliance because we have services to provide and the vehicles aren't available. So I don't see a scenario where there isn't some type of deferral of the 2027 mandate.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? Yep, please, yep, come on up to the mic.
Thank you, Jane Leonard again. So this was my world for the past 25 years in Culver City, which is in Los Angeles, West Los Angeles. And one of the things that came up that was really significant in this pathway, which I'm sure you're all over, is the training for the technicians. Depending on the type of vehicle and so forth, it does require high-voltage training, which is kind of few and far between, especially in these Northern California counties that don't have as much money as LA County does. So I'd be happy to have a conversation with you about some strategies for that, as well as some funding opportunities that may be out there, just because.
Great, thank you, Jane, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up to the mic.
Hello, my name is Linda Franklin, thank you for allowing me to interact here. I'm just curious, obviously, the cost of having to fund the new EV charging stations is a concern. However, how does that compare to the cost of paying for the gas and the diesel that's required, not to mention all the maintenance and other oil and so forth, for the current or for any future gas-powered vehicles?
You can answer that, yeah. Thank you, good question.
I, Site Logic did present a cost-saving spreadsheet because they're an energy conservation company, and their estimate over 30 years was 2.7 million in savings. I did not include that slide because I felt that if I presented it, I would have to defend it, and with all the uncertainty, I wasn't sure. But if, in a perfect world, if we had the technicians and we had, you know, reliable electric equipment with good warranties, then the, the fuel savings offset could be as much as 2.7 based on Site Logic's calculations. And, you know, I personally have a Tesla, I know electric vehicles are, are much more efficient, but I think the technology for the heavy-duty vehicle side still needs to get there. So in a perfect world, it could be as much as 2.7 million over 30 years for, for this charging system.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the question. A great question, and it's a good point. The fact still remains, though, that having to come up with this money now to implement this, and like you said, we have a city to run, we have work to do, and when we don't have the proper equipment because they're not made yet or they're not available yet, that makes it difficult to comply with draconian measures. Any other public comment? Thank you, both of you for stepping up. Anybody online? No? Okay, all right, then we'll bring it back. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one, I just wanted to thank you for answering all, all of my questions. I, I think the, it's some, they'll eventually figure this thing out with heavy-duty trucks and technology, it's a matter of time, but this is a pretty reasonable, put some initial things in the ground and infrastructure, and if 2027 doesn't happen, maybe it's 2028, 30, 30. At some point, they'll figure this out, and it's a good first step, so I support it. And I, again, appreciate all your time, both of you, for answering all my questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, well, just doing the math, I, I think we have to do this without, without a doubt, but saving $3 million over 30 years, we have to put the money out now. I think we're losing money on this, on this deal, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, go ahead, Whitney?
I was just going to say, I appreciate all the work that you put in, and I feel really confident that you're going to make the right decision, and we're making our way, the pace and scale that we're able to be comfortable with.
Yep, okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
I don't want to.
Second.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yeah.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes, thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
All right, item 13C, adopt a resolution approving the Liberty at Lincoln Phase One projects de-annexation from tax zone 10 of the City of Lincoln Community Facilities District Number 2018-2 Public Services, and annexation into tax zone 12 of the City of Lincoln Community Facilities District Number 2018-2 Public Services. Nita?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item, it's a bit unusual, we had previously annexed this particular project into our Community Facilities District 2018-2 for Public Safety Services. However, as the city has continued to grow and we're attempting to keep abreast of those changes and how they might impact the city's needs to provide funding, and part of the analysis is done when we're calculating this, CFD taxes encompasses all revenue sources, all revenue sources available to the city. And so as we are growing and adding more homes and more retail, that we have to evaluate that, and we feel that we have sufficient base now that allows us to reconsider our analysis. And so as a result of that, we are asking the city council to approve taking this out of the zone, the zone that it's currently in for 2018-2 and placing it into a different zone, acknowledging the change in the, the rate and method of apportionment or the base tax that we would be charging this particular development. And we'll also be evaluating the projects that are currently in that CFD already and determining how to move forward with adjusting them as well, and using this new methodology for all projects going forward.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, any public comment on this item? Anybody have any questions? Right, anybody online? Okay, bring it back. Guys, ready to just move forward? Thank you, Nita, appreciate you doing that, yeah. Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I grudgingly made the last one, but we'll leave this one.
Yeah, it's fine, it's up to you guys. That's your job here.
I'll move, we approve the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Desi, thank you.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yes.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes, thank you. Okay, item 13D, adopt a resolution providing policy guidance for the administration and permitting of special events in a downtown area that require street closure. Mr. Scully? Yep.
Ben, evaluating, well, first off, let me back up. If you, we held a bunch of events in the downtown area and other areas of Lincoln, and we have a process internally for evaluating those events from a safety perspective and a practical perspective. And, awesome, thank you very much, I will give that back to you, I promise. And so we, and that's, it goes through this special event committee, essentially, and that committee is made up of police and fire and public works and community development and a bunch of other departments. Basically, if you'd like to throw an event downtown, you submit this form, we all look at it, make sure that, you know, shutting down the streets is appropriate, and approve the vast, vast majority of them. And in the last couple of years, we've started to kind of hear a bunch of complaints from downtown businesses in particular, and some residents, living residential properties, that the frequency of some events and the way that some of them happen are starting to really impact their ability to operate their business on a, on a regular basis. And so more recently, thank you, more recently, I held a, we have a meeting, Councilmember Eklund and I met with the DLA and Chamber to just talk a little bit about what are the practical problems that they're dealing with, and how could we solve them, and what are the recommendations for, for kind of a mending policy? So to fast-forward to what we're recommending tonight, we tried to design a set of policies that we think are flexible and reasonable enough to still allow downtown to be a fun, vibrant place where there's a lot of events happening and fun things for the community, but not so many that it makes it impossible or difficult for people to operate their, their business, their livelihood in the downtown area. And that really sort of limited itself primarily to Fifth Street, and it's about Fifth Street from F to Lincoln Boulevard, that little block there. And of course, everybody wants to have their events there because it's a beautiful block, and there's a bunch of historic buildings, and it's great for pictures, and so there's all kinds of good reasons why. With that said, it's not the safest location to do it. There's some issues with the speed on Lincoln Boulevard, and it creates just some logistical issues for, for that area. So what we did was we tried to have our cake and eat it too. So I'm going to read you through kind of our recommended policy tweaks that we'd like the city council's blessing on, and what that does is it gives us the ability when we get these applications in to kind of push people in the directions that we think it's more appropriate for, for their, their events. Okay, so real quickly, as it relates to the use of Fifth Street, there are roughly four legacy events that have happened, been happening for many decades. Those are the Fourth of July Parade and Associated Activities, Hometown Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting, Lincoln Showcase, or Taste, depending on who you ask, and then Rods and Relics. Those four events have been going on for a really long time, and we heard from the businesses that that wasn't an issue for them. They're prepared for those events, they're fine with them, they can plan to be shut down that day or to pivot, and so there's no, no issues with those. So aside from those, we are going to encourage all other events to make use of F Street and Sixth Street instead. Both streets are a lot easier for us to manage and close, they impact a lot less commercial business, and, you know, frankly, F Street's a really great street because it's tree-lined and shaded a lot of the time and appropriate, that kind of use. We also included a little language for your consideration that gave some flexibility so that if there's some other event that doesn't exist today that really needs Fifth Street, and it's of such a significant public benefit that it'd just be crazy for us not to do it, we wanted the flexibility to have that conversation if necessary, and there's probably a couple that may or may not be out there. Second, the, to the, or third, to the extent possible, we're going to encourage the use of F and Six, and we're going to try our very best to make sure that we're not impacting those businesses that are around it, and there's some ways that we can do a better job at that, i.e., a notice is going to go out earlier. We're going to be a little bit more strict about when those notices are not provided in time, then you don't get to have your event, it's really that simple. Because it's not, it's no longer just some businesses that are closed on the weekends that probably don't care, these people live downtown, and so we have had some problems along those lines. We also have had some issues with events getting started and having street closures occur really, really early, so like you'll have an event at like four, and the events, the streets are closed at 10 for setup, that's just too long. And so we're going to try to avoid approving any events that close streets more than two hours in advance of the actual event. And we're gonna have a little bit of flexibility. So for example, if somebody has a band and they need a couple hours to set up in advance, okay? Or we'll do partial shutdowns versus shutting the entirety of the street down. Just be a little bit more sensitive to that issue. The other one was kind of important because it's an interesting problem as your community grows. It really probably wasn't ever even thought of until recently. But we would probably recommend that you try to limit any singular organization from having more than four events per year that close streets in the downtown. Because if you think about it, especially if it's a for-profit enterprise, they're making money on sort of public infrastructure. And so if, it would be a shame if other private or nonprofit folks weren't able to have an event because somebody has so many of them locked up throughout the year. So this sort of limits that a little bit. And side note, this doesn't affect someone's ability to rent the Plaza. Rent the Plaza. You can do it as much as you like. Or McBean is a great place for events. It's got bathrooms and parking and shade and everything. So still can have plenty of events in those other locations. The other thing that the downtown businesses asked for that we've actually already started working on and it actually is up on our website, we're just gonna make it a little bit better than it is, is a master calendar so that if you have business in the downtown and you want to know, hey, is there anything going on this week that might impact my business a little bit? We have a calendar that populates on the website. And every single application that comes through will get logged in and available for all of them. And then all other special events requirements remain in full force and effect for anybody that's applying. If there's anything else you'd like to add to this or nuance you wanna add, we'd be happy to take that direction as well. And then we'll report back. If this doesn't work, obviously you're gonna get complaints. And so we'll, we'll report back. What we want to avoid though is that situation where we're not applying our standards as equally as humanly possible. Because as soon as someone gets a no, especially for an event they're planning that's large, I hear about it, you hear about it. So just making it really clear would be best. So happy to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration.
Oh, thank you for that. I really appreciate all the time and thought that's gone into this because it's been a growing problem and it needed to be kind of reined in a little bit and structured, and I really appreciate that. So any questions or comments from the council?
I was just thinking, we're threading the needle here. And I think that's what I, what I see is that it's a good compromise. We're both, we want to bring businesses, we want to bring people downtown. But we have to be cognizant of the impact that it has on, on the people down here and businesses down here also. So it seems like it's a good compromise going forward. You said, we'll try it, see what happens. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, we'll tweak it. That's all.
Good. Any public comment on this item? Anybody online?
We do have Tom online. Go ahead and unmute Tom.
There you go. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm coming home from soccer practice, so I'm on my hands for you, of course. Um, no, thank you guys for taking this up. As you know, Chamber does put on some of the legacy events. And we definitely are pro-business. We want to help the community as we grow. But this has been a little bit of a problem and we are here to help support business, of course. So I just thank you for looking at this, Sean and Whitney and the entire council. So I just wanted to, you know, say Chamber supports this and thank you for looking into this.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, we appreciate that. Anything else? Okay.
I wanted to add a couple things. I know we kind of discussed this in our workshop with some of the business owners that we sort of informally polled. But there was a discussion that we started on food truck potential ordinances and if we're gonna be thinking about, you know, that there's been some feelings about food trucks being parked in front of the same businesses. And so, you know, that's not fair for the businesses that are paying for their overhead for a competing business to park right in front of their business and block, you know, people from going in there. And so that was something that I know that we wanted to think about. And then also, is there, do we want to consider having some sort of idea on, as we grow, how many we allow in general, not just per business, but throughout the year so that that also isn't having a huge fiscal impact on those businesses?
Yeah, we were kind of talking about this internally. It was interesting. It's not really, it's a good problem to have, right?
Yeah.
So many people want to use your cute downtown that you've run out of capacity to serve them. I don't think we're there yet, but I, you know, it'd be kind of interesting to maybe go visit or speak to a couple of communities that have crossed a population threshold or maybe have kind of a similar downtown setup to us and figure out how they made that decision. I'm thinking of like, there's a couple of areas, like Livermore is a good one. Some of these areas that are really busy downtowns now. And how do you limit? Because at a certain point, I think everybody wants an event fairly regularly. But do I have every single weekend? I don't know. Maybe not. So maybe we just kind of evaluate on a yearly basis and determine, has it gotten a little too out of control? There are alternatives that people could do elsewhere. It's just downtown's cool. So people like to use it.
Yeah.
So I was gonna ask about the food truck ordinance later.
The food truck ordinance will be on, I believe, for next meeting.
Right.
And it has been circulated through DLA. We did a presentation to them and vetted through the Chamber as well. So it's received as much public comment from the impacted businesses that we could think to come up with. So I think it's a pretty solid ordinance. We've gotten a lot of really positive feedback. So look at that, I think, at your next council meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The community. And I've noticed that a lot of smaller and bigger towns are using their parks more and more because there are so many events that are happening. And I don't know if there are parks that we could consider. McBean Park is a really nice park. There's lots of parking around it. And that might be something to just consider for some of these events.
Yeah, it's a super point. We actually tried to encourage people instead to use McBean. We don't have to close streets down, you know, there's just a lot of extra work involved when you're not, when you're having enclosed pathways of travel. McBean's perfect. I mean, bathrooms, got everything.
Well, and they do quite a bit. I know some of the downtown businesses do market under the lights down there in the park and all kinds of other things. But it's a great point and we could continue to push them to use the parks. And we have lots of parks that they could use. So thank you for that. We appreciate that. All right, last call for comments. All right, yeah, I appreciate all the work gone into this. I think it's much needed for a long time and I think it'll help bring some structure and some guidelines that are equitable and fair to everybody and also preserves our legacy events that everybody appreciates. So ready to take a motion if the council is ready.
One just quick minor ask is to pin in the calendar. If we don't hear complaints, that maybe next, a year from now, we can get kind of a report of how many things went through this process and...
Yeah, sounds great.
Well, hopefully you don't hear anything, but at least we can get some.
One year from July 8th. Got it.
So moved.
A second.
All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Reedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Eklund?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearl?
Yes.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes, thank you. All right.
Madam Mayor, if I may briefly interrupt and redirect us back to item 12A. We, as we were sitting here, discovered that there is actually a clerical error in the resolution, not in the ordinance, but in the resolution. It states, the resolution has the old unregulated connection fee at 1984 and not the updated connection fee of $22.45. So the staff report was correct. That error just continued over into the resolution. So with that said, I think we can treat it as a clerical error and just correct it before your signature tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Oh, appreciate that. Thank you. All right, item 13E. Discussion and Direction: Establishment of an Extended Public Facility Element Fee Deferral Program. Mr. Scully, back to you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so this is gonna take me a moment to sort of set the table for, but I'll try to move quickly. So as councils are aware, the City of Lincoln, like every city in California, assesses to new development what is known as AB 1600 fees, otherwise known as impact fees. And for whatever reason in Lincoln, we call them PFE fees.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah, I've never seen that before, but I've just adopted it even though I think it's sort of silly. Anyway, the point of impact fees, which is really a lot easier for me to understand, is that when you build a new home in a community, you're impacting the public services of said community and therefore must pay to offset those impacts. That's the simple explanation. And AB 1600 was a law that was passed that allowed for that and created a reporting structure wherein we have to account for those fees, only charge for impacts that are being created as a result of development and only build things to offset those impacts from those fees within a very defined time period. So, and those fees are, when you hear the development community concerned about the cost of development here or anywhere else, it is always about that particular set of fees. Impact, PFE, whatever you'd like to call it. And it is the most significant barrier to affordability related to housing that probably exists in California. And they're super important and they're needed. And most of the things that we have come to appreciate here in Lincoln, whether it be certain roadways or parks or water infrastructure, all of that stuff is paid for by those fees. So they're really important and they need to be technically correct. Now, with all that said, the barrier that they create for certain kinds of projects creates an inability for certain projects to get off the ground because of the upfront cost before any revenue has been received. That's the goal of said project. We see that the most in certain types of really, really large-scale commercial projects where you're, you may be spending millions and millions of dollars before you've even opened up your doors and sold a single widget. And then we see it a lot in, in multifamily projects. I'll explain why it's more difficult. We, the easiest way to think about this is if you look around Lincoln and you look at the development that we have. Anybody could draw the conclusion that there doesn't seem to be the same barrier for single-family homes in Lincoln. Those, we don't seem to have any problem getting those projects off the ground funded and built. They're happening everywhere, right? Multifamily projects, so apartments, are really hard to pull off. The only project that we have in Lincoln, we've done quite a bit of research on this in the last 25 or 30 years, is the affordable apartment projects in 12 Bridges, which is building right now. So that's just only in the last couple of years that has that occurred. So prior to that, we're pretty sure that there's not any relatively recent market rate or affordable housing, affordable apartment projects built in Lincoln since probably the 90s is our, is our best estimate. And then, and then the other thing that struck me as pretty wild, and I could be wrong, so please correct me out there if I am. I don't think there are any market rate apartment projects in Lincoln of any size, let's call it over 50 units, in Lincoln, period, at all. So in other words, the apartments that you see in Lincoln, almost all of them, if not all of them, are income restricted on some level. In other words, you have to make below a certain amount of money to even apply to be in there. So we have a gap in our housing continuum. So with all that as the table setting, a few weeks ago, a developer, a local business person have acquired some property over on the corner of Fifth and Joiner. And we're working on a market rate apartment project. And so we're excited about that because it's a different kind of development that we don't really have yet in Lincoln. And we hear a lot from, I hear from staff that work here for us. I hear from people in the community, hey, I'm not really at an income level where I can afford to get a starter home, but I make too much money to get into those affordable apartments. And I want to live in Lincoln and there's, and I can't rent a house because there's not available. There's just nothing here for me. And so I've really come to enjoy the term housing continuum because it sort of encapsulates the starter end to the really expensive homes and where you fall over the course of homeownership in your life. So as we're looking at the project, which is complex for a variety of reasons, one of the things that's brought up is, hey, you know, it's really difficult for us to get this off the ground because the amount of money that we have to pay in fees just to get the building permit almost makes it restrictive for us to get this off the ground. How can we solve that? Well, unlike many developers who just say, hey, fix it, Sean, they actually came with an option and an idea, which I think is pretty good. And it's actually attached to your staff report. It's a, it comes out of Oroville, I believe. Basically, what the city did there was it created this deferral program where you move forward with your development. And today, I do, I have ability in the code to defer fees to occupancy and I do it pretty regularly, just depending on the nature of the project. But that only gets you to, through construction, into that point at which you're ready to get signed off and you can start renting out your, your units. So you might be asking, well, what's the difference, Sean, between that and a 500-unit, single-family development? Well, the difference is, is that a developer can have 500 lots and they can, and they do, typically come in with three, four, five permits at a time, pay those fees, build the homes, sell the homes, or have pre-sold the homes. It's already have the money to pay the fees. So they can kind of limit their capital outlay in the beginning, right? For a, for an apartment project, it's much more complex. Each unit, and I'm sorry, Clancy, how many units in this one? 109 units. Three buildings? Okay, so assume 30-ish units. Multiply that times your per-unit PFE fee, you're paying 30 permit units per building. And that's a significant amount of money to outlay at the very beginning. So what Oroville figured out was, let's figure out a way to defer them past occupancy. And in most cases, we would never recommend this unless you want to encourage a certain kind of development. The, the way that they have it structured, we have mostly mirrored in this kind of concept in front of you, but with a couple of little tweaks and changes just for you to consider. Oroville's term is a 10-year period. So you defer for a 10-year period. We kind of feel like 10 years in a, in an environment like Lincoln that's rapidly growing where we really do have to build capital facilities like all the time. Ben has a list of, I don't know, 50 that he's in the middle of at the moment. 10 years puts us in a position where some of those dollars that we're counting on to build the infrastructure are pretty far down the road and may have been needed before that. So we figured, well, maybe we split the baby and, and recommend five years. And, you know, council could discuss if you want to have some sort of extender that's mutually agreeable. But that was the, the first step. Second step is, how do you make sure that the dollars you're collecting later have the same net present value of today? And there's two ways to do it. You could set a static interest rate, I think Oroville picked 3%, or you could tie it to a construction cost index, which, which is what we have in here, which makes sure that by the time those fees are being paid, we have enough current value dollars to build the thing that we wanted to build in the first place. Security provision. So City Attorney and I talked about this quite a bit. How do we make sure that if a project goes belly up a few years after opening, the city still receives its funding? Or, you know, I'm not accusing current developers of this, but certainly there are tons of situations where somebody just walks on a financial arrangement and never pays. So how do we ensure that? And so there's a few mechanisms, the application of lien and making sure that, Christine can explain, but there's some stipulated judgment, right? That they're going to execute in advance so that we don't have to go through the lengthy kind of court proceeding that we would have to do to get the dollars that are owed to, to the city. The third important security provision that Oroville does have in their agreement is that if the property is sold from the original ownership to anybody else, fees are due upon, upon sale. We don't want to be chasing around 47 different owners over a five or 10-year period. Now, let's talk real quick about applicability and limitations. So we would say, there is some exposure here. You're not collecting what you would collect at onset. And so whether, while we think we can secure it pretty well legally, there's still exposure. There may be something that we, a project we need to accelerate. Take the cost overruns in the Park PFE program, for example. Those are dollars that we would collect today that we won't use today. So you might want to do something today, but you're waiting five years to do the thing. There is a, there is exposure to that. So what we've thought is, you really want to limit it to projects that are below a certain unit count. And I don't, this is not a scientific number. I just came up with it. We picked 150 units because that's a pretty healthy size. We picked 150 units because that's a pretty healthy size multifamily project in most cases. I think the 12 Bridges project was 179, was my memory. And that's a big project, if you've seen it off of the highway. So 150 was right about where we thought, where it's not such a large project that we're deferring, you know, tens of millions of dollars five years into the future. It's much more limited. And more importantly than that, is to make sure that you're limiting the number of these that you're going to allow. So we thought about it like the hotel incentive program. We didn't know if everybody was going to come rushing to that program or not. So what we did is we limited it to a couple of years, and I think we said no more than, remember Nita, four, I think four applications, three? Yeah, so we would kind of recommend that here. You, you limit it to a two-year pilot period and no more than three projects of no more than 150 units can apply for it. Practically, I don't see, I, I think likely we'll get one and then maybe another one that is currently is some due diligence off of First Street, and that's, that's about it. Because there's just not a ton of multifamily buildable land available at the moment. But it also limits your exposure, just in case somebody rezones things and wants to do it. And then similar to Councilor Reed's comment on last item, we kind of report back after that period and say like, hey, has this kind of served the intent that the council had? So the only reason you do a program like this is because you want to encourage a diversity of housing in your community and you identify that, hey, we do have a gap. And I think you can make that finding here. There is no other reason to do it other than you're trying to encourage a certain type of development in your community, in my mind. So that's kind of the pitch. And what we're recommending is that, oh, one last thing. We've included some language in there that we think there needs to be fee discretion. So sometimes when I defer fees, I'm really picky about which kinds. So like if there's something that we need to build that's really important, that I, I just don't feel comfortable deferring. Lately, what it's been is treatment, wastewater treatment. We have a wastewater treatment plant. Someday, soon, it's going to have to expand. And so I don't want to be deferring any fees, even if it's for 90 days, because we really need that cash on hand. And we'd recommend you give a little discretion to finance to make those decisions as well. Although usually it's just for the really serious things, not, not the ones that are more meat and potatoes that we do. And then, of course, the final one is that it's, this is a five- or 10-year agreement is a long agreement. And so we would recommend those types of deferrals come to you. And so, you know, maybe the first couple will actually present, but mostly I suspect they'll end up on consent and answer, ask questions about them. So what we'd like is the direction to go ahead and move forward, or at least give us some feedback on the parameters, or if you want edits to them, and then we'll actually write it up into a formalized one, which we'll agendize maybe for the next meeting, and then the program can be live for people to apply to it. If you have any questions, I know that was a lot. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. That was a really great explanation. I appreciate the groundwork that you laid there. My initial thought is, I, I think it's a good idea, laid out the way you did. I, I think I would probably lean more towards five years other than 10, because what you said earlier is a really good point, that like, that's a long way down the road. And we're not in a position to be just, you know, letting things go that long. That's my initial thought on that. But I, I, I'm open to seeing what, what kind of plan you could put together based on this model.
No, I, I like the parameters. I think I would also lean towards five and/or if it goes higher, there's an escalator so that it's not, you're carrying current dollars for five years, and then if it goes longer than five years, the city is moving ahead of where they would have been in exchange for that additional time, something along those lines. But other than that, I think, I like the idea of plugging kind of a hole in our housing picture, our housing continuum.
Yeah, because the way you explained that was really good, because I had a resident reach out to me, remember I asked you about the requirements for the apartments that are being built in 12 Bridges? What kind of income restriction there was there? It's not what we would call Section 8 or anything like that, but there is some requirement. And her comment was, you know, we have people here that are like teachers and they, they make decent money, so they may not qualify for the income, but they don't, like you said, they can't buy a house, or they don't want to have to make less money to qualify, but they need a place. So what, the way you explain that, I don't think I've ever thought about that continuum like that, right? We talk about affordable housing, but having market-rate apartments or units. And I guess, I guess what trips me up a little bit is like what market rate actually means, right? Because there are some apartments that are so outrageously expensive, like I couldn't even afford them, right? So it depends on what you're saying, market rate. But I like, I like the idea to fill that gap of what we, we still need.
Yeah, so if it's okay with you, I like to do this when I give presentations, maybe we could do some quick experiment. Who in this room has lived an apartment in their life? Okay, and there's a physician in the back that just raises his hand.
That makes me feel so much better.
So I ask that question when I give presentations sometime about housing because it, it shows that regardless, the vast majority of people have lived in versions of housing until they got to this point. And I could just say, for me personally, apartments, then I bought a condo, and then we had enough, just enough equity to buy a little house, and then so on and so on, right? And that's kind of the pathway to various levels of homeownership for most people. And so we think that that's really important. But to your point about market rate, you're right, the likelihood of some of these places of being extremely expensive is high, but the reason for that is that there's no alternatives, right? So like, we kind of need to, my opinion is, we need to encourage more of those so that eventually sort of wash that out a little bit. Yep.
Okay, do you guys have questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, most of, most of those are the things that I would share and say as well, but it's my opinion that this is the responsible thing for us to do, and I know that we're all on the same page. And we were discussing this at our workshop and our strategic planning earlier this year, that this is something that we all would like to see moving forward, is there to be more options for achievable housing and the continuum or spectrum of what people need. And my hope is that regardless of what employment or job somebody has here in our community, that they have the opportunity to still live here as well. So I appreciate that we're doing this, I think. I'm proud that we're doing this.
To me, this checks all the boxes. I mean, it's creative, it solves a problem, and we're building in the safeguards to make sure that our, that our investment is protected, and I think that's, that's the key. But just the creativity is cool. And I don't think most people understand the complexity that goes into those types of, of larger projects. You're right, you, we, we look around the community, we see houses just sprouting like weeds, right? But you don't think about what it takes to put up a big, single infrastructure. And just the economics that drive that is so different. So this seems like, you know, with the proper safeguards, and it seems like a, like a great creative solution.
So I know we're just giving direction, it's not a formal vote, but I would like to give anybody in the audience an opportunity to make a public comment on this, if anybody wants to. And then, then you can come next, Dr. Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Council members. My name's Dave Judd, I'm a fairly recent resident of Lincoln, Lincoln Sun City. And I have to tip my hat to the council and the management here for coming up with a very creative idea. This is a critical juncture that we're all living in, the lack of housing for my grandkids, kids who are desperately seeking entree into our lifestyle. And this is the most creative kind of solution that I've heard for addressing the upfront costs and the upfront starting of these, of these kinds of projects. So it's elegant, it's creative, really well-thought-out, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for, for all of the work that's gone into this. And I'd recommend approval of that.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Dr. Ellis? Or Clancy, either one, you both can come up at the same time.
While these two are walking up, I'll just say, like, I love the accolades, but it was really their idea. I just wrote it up.
Just like, first off, Eric Ellis and Clancy Thompson. And just want to say, thank you for consideration of this. And I have to say this, I would like to say that we came up with this ourselves as well, but we actually have a friend who actually gave us this as well, it's a recommendation. And so I'm a big fan of not reinventing the wheel. If it's been invented somewhere else, then we can take the good ideas and use them, use them here. Obviously, we're the two people trying to develop this property, and we're not big developers. You know, I'm a businessman in the local community, and so is Clancy and stuff. And we live here, and this is our community. And what we're trying to build is something, it's obviously, it's, you know, for us, it's exciting and everything else, but you know, I've got 80 employees and who work in this city. And this is a place that they would be able to afford, right? So it's, it's like, it's not, we're not looking, you know, to charge millions of dollars or something like that. These are something for like my people, my, my employees. And they're, they're good people, and they've got, you know, husbands and wives and kids, and they need someplace to live, rather than having to live in Yuba City or Marysville. And that's where they live right now.
We talked about, the other word for it is, it's workforce housing, is what it is. And there's a great need for that. Go ahead.
Clancy, I need you to speak in the microphone, just so people at home can hear you, okay? Thanks. We talked about market rate and what that is compared to, they call it affordable housing. And I know we kind of had this conversation a little bit in a meeting that we had with Sean, and we were looking at low-income, well, 80% AMI. Don't qual, an MA.
Right.
I mean, doesn't necessarily qualify, but they can't afford it. But it's like, 80% AMI was, I think, 1938 a month for a one-bedroom apartment. Market rate is 2054.
Yeah.
For the same apartment, you know, for market rate. And what we're looking at providing is a, I mean, it'll be gated, it'll be nice, it'll have a pool, it'll have, you know, some of the amenities that some of the apartments don't have around here. And give that ability for people to live in Creekside, you know, school district and things like that, that can't afford certain houses up there, so.
Thank you. And which lot is yours again?
The really funky one on Fifth and Joiner.
Fifth and Joiner, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's another thing.
Northwest.
North, yeah, northwest corner, right there. So it's a, it's a, it's an interesting piece of property, but we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully make it work.
Well, I believe you can.
No, and I just want to say too, is like, I said, not being big developers like this at all, this is significant for us, the, you know, the funds to come up with impact fees is, is a significant hurdle. I mean, it's like, we're talking like five and a half million dollars. That's a lot of money to come up with on top of all the fees for engineering and, and soil analysis and, and everything else that goes on with it. So it's, it is a significant hurdle for us. We wouldn't be able to overcome it, that's to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, this puts us, this puts us over, you know, where we have the ability to do the project now, and this moves it. So all of you considering it, we really do appreciate it.
We do appreciate it. And like I said, maybe it's an idea for the future as well. Yeah.
True. And I'll just say, as far as whoever's idea it is, as a 30-year-plus educator, there's no shame in stealing good ideas, and it's what you do with it once you make it yours.
Borrowed.
Yeah. Right. And so, and you know, in our region, we talk about this a lot. We talk about affordable workforce, whatever term you want to put on it, you know, housing. And if we're not willing to step outside the box to make it happen without putting ourselves in jeopardy, like, I think that we have the obligation to do that. So thank you for bringing it forward, and thank you for being willing to build in Lincoln, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that wants to make a comment? No, okay. So I, I think you have your consensuses, I think we're all on board, and I think we should move forward. I think that's great.
Okay, we'll write it up.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Sean, back to you, city manager reports.
I need to start agendizing my stuff earlier, so I can be ready. I only have a couple of really quick things. One is that I don't have a, there is a date, I just don't know it off the top of my head, but we are rapidly approaching the Senior Health Fair, third annual Senior Health Fair. We just got confirmation that Kaiser will be there, a bunch of great speakers. We have so many vendors now, we actually are being a little bit more selective about what's helpful to, to our residents. We're still working with primarily Sun City, but we're also going to work with Esplanade on trying to figure out some transportation options for people to get them down. But every year it's grown. In fact, at some point, it may be a little too big even for the pavilion, so.
What date did you say?
Just trying to pull it up. It's, it's, I believe we usually schedule it for like late August and early September, so I'll, I'll get that date out to everybody, but it's coming, coming through. Also, we had, just a quick little update on the skate park. Ariceli, our engineering manager, and I are working on the paperwork to the county for the 270-ish thousand dollars that are available to Lincoln. Should have that submitted for the board to consider in the next week. And we also are doing some internal analysis of the environmental mitigation of that property, which is another $250,000 that was coming out of the project budget. But it's just so happens that our engineering manager did a little more investigation and determined that at some point, way back before the city ever owned the property and the school district did, they did some environmental mitigation there already. And so therefore, our interpretation is that that has been satisfied, and we will be memoing that and moving forward with the project. So that's 500-ish of your, of our $900,000 hole. So make it, get in there, get in there. Yep.
That's amazing.
We're gonna do a little value engineering and get there, we'll see. And no other major reports except for that. Oh, yes, I do have two, two other things. One is that the, had one of the best operational Fourth of Julys I think we've ever had. It was certainly the biggest one I've ever seen. And very few issues, if any, from a traffic flow perspective. Everybody seemed to get along. We had a couple little public safety things, but nothing, nothing horrible. And then, last thing I'll just say, and I'm not sure how we're going to tackle it, but we have heard the message from not only our elected officials, but the community at large, that the illegal fireworks situation is, is completely out of control. Even saw it literally less than half a block from my house. And I, we've been, Chief Mejia and I, and I believe Chief Alice too, probably, we've all been down this road before of how, what is an effective tool and method to try to really affect behavior along these lines? And it's just a really challenging thing. So we're gonna think about it over the next couple of months and try to formulate some kind of plan. But just to think out loud for a minute, I think a lot of it was going to end up be a lot more public education and outreach. There will need to be a punitive component to it, but that won't get us there alone. It's going to have to be a cultural, you know, outreach to make sure that people are aware of just how serious and dangerous it could be.
Right, well, I appreciate you taking that up, because I know we've talked about it several times. And as I've said to you, my thought is, yes, we have to do a community outreach, it has to be, you know, a continued message leading up to the times of year where people do fireworks, Fourth of July, New Year's, whatever. And it has to be a fine that's so shocking that it'll get their attention. So, you know, my thought is, like, stop messing around with 1,000, 2,000. It's like $10,000 fine right off the bat, and then it goes up from there. Because the safe and sane ones are fine, we don't have problems with those, nonprofits depend on those. People can do fireworks, you can come to the park, you can go to Cal Expo, you can go wherever you want to see the big ones. But if you light off the illegal ones, you're, you're putting people's homes and property in danger and lives in danger. And, and frankly, I know it's really hard to enforce, but we have to try because I'm sick of it. I'm sick of people being afraid of it, I'm sick of the, the risk that it puts to our public safety and our residents. And people don't have a right to do that. They don't have a right to shoot off illegal fireworks when there's other options. So my thought is, and I appreciate you doing it, is you make it, make it as steep as you can legally, without cruel and unusual punishment.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. And, and to, on your note about Fourth of July, very, very sad about the tragedy of the fireworks warehouse exploding and, and loss of life and, and the damage and all that. That was tragic, and we pray for those people. But we're very grateful that ours wasn't, our fourth, our fireworks weren't impacted. There were a lot of cities around us who had to cancel, which, I mean, it's understandable and so sad, but you're right, Sean, it went off without a hitch, it was a great day. And I think we did set a record for people on the parade route. There were so many people there.
Heard from Tom and Dreary told me that there were over 90 floats, more than 1,000 participants, and something like 10 to, maybe 12 to 15,000 people out there.
Yeah.
It was huge.
Yeah. It was over an hour and a half parade.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is awesome. It's great. Nobody does it like Lincoln, so, yep. Okay, that's all you got, sir? Okay. Council-initiated business. Anybody have any business? And you already answered my question about... And you already answered my question about food truck. Committee reports? I got committee reports.
Nothing yet. I've got, next week we have the airport committee, have Pioneer next week or later this week. APCD is pushed off, so that's it.
Yeah, mine have been pretty quiet the last few weeks, so I haven't, I don't have anything to report yet.
I think we have PCWA coming up. WA is next week.
I think it's August.
Oh, okay. I gotta look at my calendar again.
This will always cancel for July, so we'll have a meeting next week, so. July is kind of a quiet month for a lot of meetings anyway, that's good.
I have LaFco tomorrow, and we have our SEDB remnant parcel for annexation is the big item.
Good.
For us hearing, so hopefully we can wrap that up.
Yeah, let's get that done.
EDC is canceled this month, and, yeah.
All right, for information items, couple things. This morning, several of us were out at Foskett for the new fitness court ribbon cutting. Congressman Kevin Kiley was there, Megan Schultz from Joe Patterson's office was there, and Eric Johnson was the emcee, because he was the spearhead of this project. And I had shared there, and the news was out there, and they did interviews, which was kind of cool, but we had a pretty good crowd, and it was a really great presentation, and the, the court is already being used, it's beautiful, the community loves it. And I had shared this morning that during, I think it was during COVID, that that company reached out to me, I did a Zoom meeting with them, and I saw the whole presentation, and I liked it, but we just didn't have the bandwidth to handle that right then, and so I just said, well, you know, maybe later. And so somehow Eric got in touch with them, and he ran with it, and he did a wonderful job putting it together and with staff's help, and that thing got done pretty quickly in government standard time, right? And so anyway, we're very thrilled with it, the community's gonna love it, and it was a great morning for that. So thank you, those of you who were able to be there, really appreciate it. And then I have one on a serious note, and Chief, I'm not sure if I talked to you about this, but I did talk to Sean, and maybe you've already addressed it, but I met with the new HOA president from Sun City, and he said that they're having a real problem with children or teenagers on the e-bikes coming into Sun City, and it's causing danger and hazard for them, and they're not listening to, you know, when people tell them these. So I wanted to put that on your radar. I know that you guys are monitoring the e-bikes and the scooters and all that stuff, but just wanted to, in case you weren't aware of that, that it's becoming a real problem up there, so we can take a look at that. Yeah. And I think that's the only information. I have, anybody have any information?
Yeah, I was, I was wondering if we could get an update, if there is any, on the 12 bridges and Sierra College light.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So some good news, and pretty good news. Good news is that PCTPA looks like they're going to advance about a million dollars in what was transit funding towards a contribution, towards the, the intersection project, which is really great. Because I believe it's either gonna come directly out of that transportation fund, or the transit fund or, and/or Sparta, because we did confirm that it is a Sparta project as well. So, so that's great, because it means that resources do exist to at least get started. There's also been some discussions that I know that Vin has had, and Matt's been involved too. Councilmember Brown has been pushing it at the PCTPA level with county staff about like schedule and who takes this one. It's kind of one of those kind of strange interjurisdictional projects where like half of the roadway kind of bizarre is sort of, and then the other half. It's really a county project, because it's core, that's a county roadway. And it appears that the, the county has heard us and is starting to move the wheels to get that project prioritized. The question that we're still kind of working on is what is the reasonable schedule of when it's going to get accomplished? Because the concern that we all have is that it's a dangerous intersection, we know that, there's been two accidents in the last week there. And so, you know, capital projects are expensive and they take a long time, but this is, this is an important one, because we're aware of a, of a perceived at least deficiency. So we're open to it all. If it turns out that it's more efficient for, for the city of Lincoln to take lead on design and getting a consultant involved to get rolling on that, great. If it's better that the county do that and they can do it more efficiently, great, doesn't matter to us. We just are, we've signaled that we're ready to help in whatever way we can, so we can get it done as soon as we can.
Well, here's my question about that. The message that Councilmember Eklund got back from the supervisor was that they're rolling, you know, with their engineers and all, and it doesn't look like it would be started or whatever till like next summer.
At the earliest.
At the earliest. If we took the lead, can we do it quicker?
No. Well, ye- yes, in the sense that we could, we certainly believe, and Vin, just jump on me if you think I'm wrong, but we could deliver the project by next summer. The, Vin and I are a little bit dubious about whether or not, unless it's absolutely prioritized as like this is priority number one project, we've got to be ready to go by next summer, whether it's a reasonable timeline for any agency to get it done in that period. We think it probably ends up maybe going a little longer than that. It's, it's not as simple as an intersection that you might have at, well, just take Oak Tree Lane, for example. Different kind of project, but that's taken a really long time to get where it is. You're talking about a generally unimproved area that's sitting along the bank of, you know, a hill essentially, and so there's going to be, I would assume, some geotechnical work that needs to be done, and then it's probably some dirt that's going to need to be brought in. I'm sure it's going to be a little bit more complex. But I don't know, Vin, do you want to speak to that? It's hard for you to say without having a design, but.
Yes, I actually had a chance to, after our brief discussion this afternoon, I talked to Aricelli a little bit. The challenge is that, you know, 12 Bridges is within city limits, that's the lake that's approaching Sierra College Boulevard. And, and all of Sierra, Sierra College Boulevard is within the county right of way. So regardless of who is taking the lead in, in design and construction, there needs to be a lot of coordination with the county. Matt and I, our public works director, have been meeting with PCTPA, and Sean is correct, there is a million dollars in Sparta funds that's unallocated or, you know, flagged for transit needs two or three fiscal years into the future that PCTPA staff is agreeable to, to advancing for, for this safety improvement project. I am not a big fan, and I try not to ever use the D-word, and Christine understands why as a traffic engineer, but we, we certainly agree that we need to enhance the safety at this location. And I think at the staff level, even last week, county staff reached out to, to their Bigford developer to discuss whether they can move forward, you know, with, with the project. And I think the county is looking at designing both intersections or both signals at the same time, the one at 193 and the one at 12 Bridges. You know, as far as the city's interest goes, I think with the funding already available, you know, from Sparta or 12 Bridges, we should be trying to keep the two projects separate, because the other one is going to involve the state and Caltrans and 193, and I think there's going to be significant widening needed over at 193. So that is probably going to be more extensive. You know, the city's willing to take the lead if, if we think, if the county thinks that we can move faster, but as Sean mentioned, Aricelli and her limited number of engineers is, you know, we're going to have to deprioritize something, right? But even then, we would still need the county to, to commit a point of contact from their public works engineering team to stay engaged in the project as we move forward with design and ultimately construction. I think if we really prioritize it, it's possible to get it done in, in a couple of years. But definitely, we, we should start design as quickly as possible, and, and really would, and I know Councilmember Brown is not present tonight, but if he could continue to, you know, push for that with PCTPA, perhaps, you know, get the ball rolling as far as moving, advancing the funding for the project, I think we can, you know, we can get things moving.
And I think like the other part is, the construction part of it is one thing. It may be in conversations with the county who have lots of capital projects going on all over the county, it may be that we could be more nimble on the soft part of the project, meaning design, and kind of teeing it up for whoever ends up being the folks that run the construction part of it. So we're, anyway, point being, we're willing to collaborate, coordinate however makes it fastest.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, thanks. We'll just, we'll just keep on top of it and keep communicating and move forward as best we can, and thank you, Councilmember Eklund, for your, your lead on this too, and it's been a problem for a long time, and we need to get it done, so. All right, thank you, appreciate that information.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, anything else? No?
I would like to, sorry to extend the meeting, I would like to just comment, I did talk with Richard Moorhead, the deputy director of public works, they know this is a top priority for us, so I don't know that that was emphasized, but Richard Moorhead and we regularly meet with the public works director, so Derek Gady is fully on board, so they're fully supportive, they know this is a really important project for us. So we'll try to report back in the very near future on where, where the status is.
Great, we appreciate that, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, word adjourned.